We will open the planning board meeting for Tuesday, May 23. This is being conducted in a hybrid manner pursuant to the general laws. If anybody is recording it, that is fine. We are recording it and we'll be putting it online. I just ask that if anybody's recording it, that you let us know. Okay. Seven o'clock PM, town planners report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. This goes to you. Okay. Few items to share with the board this evening. I received a copy of a letter regarding 237 Sheet pasture road and some potential unpermitted earth excavation activity on that property. I'll figure everyone posted as to any further developments. As reported by the buildings back there. Let's see. Ninety-five Sheet pasture road. We've seen that property come up a couple of times in recent history for a few A and R lots. I received a call from Mr. Atif Khan over the past two weeks, a few calls, I should say, asking if that was an appermittable location for a cemetery. So in doing our due diligence and double checking, I established that that is a protected activity under the Dover amendment, so long as it's tied to a religious component. And share that information.
Say that again, Chair?
That was ninety-five Sheet pasture.
This is brought to you by a group together?
He didn't mention if he was representing the group. I spoke with Kirk Sanders for family property over at Crescent Circle. If you turn in at the Sudley curb cut along College Highway, there's a commercial building right in front that his father occupied for many years. His question was related to following an A and R plan to reestablish the property boundary line between adjacent residential property, that is where his father resided, and the commercial component out there. My particular notes on that matter were related to understanding what rights remain and how the property is accessed as it relates to use. Since that is, dare I say, business restricted perhaps? Yeah, business restricted through that section right there. But the rear acreage, before you get through the lots, it is residential zone. I spoke with Greg Bellino a few months back. He had reached out to have an open discussion about cannabis bylaws here in Southwick. Coincidentally, he called the Wednesday after the town meeting. But I did share with him that if you'll be article that passed that would change a portion of the town's bylaws to allow for retail use or say, the retail component, I should say, of cannabis-related businesses, isn't the final step in that process. There would be further bylaw revisions to come. So he put a mark in it. He mentioned that he and his team are still interested in doing business in Southwick. But he'll stay tuned. I'm sure he'll be calling back. Spoke with Wendy Burchill today regarding forty-seven Congamon Road. It's a property that has come on the market as a single-family home and a detached barn that has improved spaces in the loft area. It is advertised in such a fashion to note that the improved spaces at the barn are not, it's not a living space. And so the inquiry, as you probably often guess, is what is it going to take to establish that? But since it is detached, we don't pass the test for two-family dwelling. It also shares utilities, water and sewer with the existing residents out there. So being limited on frontage, that is our forty zone out there, and acreage, we also have the opportunity for, we'll call it a state brought provisions to somehow divide this up. I've added this around with owner a little bit in recent history. So just sharing that with the board with the question about, well, where is Southwick in terms of accessory dwelling units? That question came up. I told her there's a history of discussion that I wasn't necessarily partied to, but it will surely come up again. Lastly, I spoke with Deborah Hebert regarding 101 College Highway and the question of establishing an animal sanctuary, which I think was an interesting question in light of our zoning bylaws. So that is our forty zone land. There are provisions for, we'll call it, animal husbandry. This is when for profit shall be on a parcel of not less than five acres and so on and so forth, unless it's for personal use. So somewhere down that line, establishing through our discussions that the concept is not a for-profit model. And yet this is clearly beyond, we'll call it, personal use houses of animals. It tends to fall a little bit between the cracks. There is adjacent land that's on the market. I, that would certainly clean up a few important questions and answers that I need to circle back around in terms of, oh, do you just pass the, we'll call it, the tiebreaker market and not have me worry about the function at the property? Well, in any event, that's an ongoing discussion I thought I'd just share with the board. That's it for town planners report.
Okay. Seven oh five, public comment. Anybody have anything for the board tonight that is not on the agenda? All right. Seeing nothing. Move on.
I had to vamp for a few minutes there.
Tuesday.
I don't know, William.
Seven ten PM, one fifty-seven Feeding Hills Road. Continued public hearing. How are you tonight?
I'm good.
Hey, Steve.
Steve saw me.
I got the hold of you. Thank you.
Did we see a few letters since the last meeting? Okay. That's, stop. Those two, yes. And that's all.
When was the last meeting?
Oh, it was a second.
Good question.
Okay. All right. Well, let me put those aside for one second. Steve, anything you wanted to present tonight, add in tonight?
Right, I just want to continue the conversation and probably go for continuous until we get all the other ducks lined up.
Okay.
There are two ideas that I believe can help you get over the expanded non-pre-existing non-conforming use. And the first one is, and I apologize, but I went to print this out and my Hewlett Packard was out of yellow ink. So it would not print out in black and white. It would not print out, so.
The HB curbs, right?
My God, yes. So I don't know what section it is in, but it's in the non-conforming use chapter. And it is section A, one, section A, paragraph one, sub-paragraph C, where it says, the planning board may grant these with these following, if the meeting's following conditions. And C is, we went through this before, you know, any change extended or altered by special permit granting by the planning board. The planning board may only grant, but shall not be required to grant such special permit if it finds such a change, extension, alteration shall be equal or more appropriate to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming use or structure. And that such change, extension, or alteration shall not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming use or structure, notwithstanding anything to the contrary contained therein. No special permit shall be granted by the planning board hereon there, which provides a change, extension, or alteration of a non-conforming use or structure outside of the original footprint or foundation of the structure. And the key part on that is where it says, notwithstanding anything to the contrary. And the way I interpret this is that the sentences before this one offer the contrary, that you may do that provided such changes and areas are not detrimental to the neighborhood. And then that last sentence is the one that says that contradicts anything like that, then you're not allowed to. So I believe that what the proponent is having, is looking for is not more detrimental to the neighborhood. And I believe that you can approve this because it is not, what was I saying? Not saying anything contrary. So I know you're going to try to, you got to wrap your head around that one, but I believe that the last sentence gives you the opportunity because you have something contrary, and the contrary is it's not that detrimental to the neighborhood.
Yeah, I mean, that's not how that's read. I don't, I mean, we can run it by town council, but.
Well, that's all I, I.
I mean, that's a pretty common phrase, notwithstanding anything to the contrary contained herein.
Right.
And that is, that is basically saying regardless of what anything else says and how you interpret it, you're not, you can't do it X. So.
And I would say that that's a quick discussion to have because this says, notwithstanding anything to the contrary. And everything before that sentence offers the contrary.
Okay. So, but so notwithstanding anything before, no special permit shall be granted, which goes outside the original footprint. I mean, I, that's, I think it's pretty clear to me, but I will, I will make a note of it and send it to town council if you want.
I've just, that's why I just wanted to have that, bring that up.
No, no, that's fine.
And the other issue, or not issue, the other concept is that these buildings are basically not part of the original footprint. They're an accessory building, which could then possibly come under an accessory use. And again, I'm just offering these up for you to contemplate as we move forward, trying to put these other pieces of the puzzle together.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Anything else that you wanted to add?
No, that's pretty much it, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to.
Let me just read these in for the record and then we can talk about where this is going to go and open up for public comments. First is an email dated May eighth, twenty twenty-three, from Matt Cassie, one forty-five Feeding Hills Road. It's an email to John Goddard. Lucky your voicemail this morning. Please see below, the below picture is five in total of Crepe's Tea House, one fifty-seven Feeding Hills Road, using one of the outbuilding slash gazebo to host a party slash event this Saturday. I also called the Southwick Police Department to have a town professional document the occurrence. As you can see in the picture, there are tables set up inside the buildings with tablecloths that have warming food steno's. Please provide a quick response to let me know that you receive this email or reply with any questions that you may have. And then there's another email from Mr. Cassie later that day. As a follow-up to the planning board public hearing that was held on April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, I am in a butter to the Crepe's Tea House, one fifty-seven Feeding Hills Road, with the following major concern, with regards to the available parking and the limitation that this location has with regards to capacity. Below are five pictures from May ninth, twenty twenty-one, that clearly show that this business is exceeding the parking lot limitations. Their customers are parking on the lawn to the right side of the building, which they gain access to using the town well pumping station access road. The sixth picture was taken on June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one, where the restaurant patrons were parking on both sides of the access road, hanging around their cars in a tailgating style fashion. All these pictures are taken prior to the building of the three new entertaining gazebo slash buildings. A lot of the activities like baby showers and children's birthdays would be held within these buildings. This have a single person showing up in a car alone over the child, which has proven to overstress the main building parking limitations. Please let me know if you have any questions or any additional details. All right. Any comments on the submissions?
Oh, no, I don't think so.
All right. Anything from the board?
Just not good.
Any comments from public officials? Get to the public one, man. All right. Any public comments?
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
In reference to the date, the outbuilding, could you confirm that for me, please?
The twenty twenty-one?
May.
Or the, oh, the date on the.
The first email, the pictures were taken on what date?
May ninth.
May sixth.
No, no, the, yeah, the email was dated May eighth. That was a Monday, I think it was on Saturday. So it'd be May sixth.
Of this year.
Of this year, yeah.
And that is after the season exists or before that? Yeah, I don't have that paper confirmed, I'm sorry. If I recall, that was before. I think this discussion precipitated that action.
All right. Anything else?
Just to defend everybody's knowledge of having been a user of the building this time.
Thank you. Ma'am, go ahead, just a name and address first.
Hi, my name is Diane Jolte. I live at one forty-five Feeding Hills Road. I wrote a letter on May eleventh to the select board after speaking to the building department. I am an advocate for people with disabilities. These buildings that they have built on their property are not ADA compliant. Anybody with a wheelchair or any kind of disability where it affects their legs cannot access these buildings and they have a right to, according to Title III of the ADA. I am the one that took the pictures and I'm the one that contacted Mr. Scott regarding the fact that they used the building without being ADA compliant. This building has no access for anybody that has a disability. They should not be using these buildings without accessibility for everybody. So I am very concerned about any type of special permits or anything that will allow them to access these buildings without being ADA compliant. I have already contacted the select board. I've contacted the building department. I've talked to Mr. Scott numerous times. I've taken the pictures as well. And I just wanted to go on the record with the, with the planning board, stating my concerns about any type of special permits for this building without being ADA compliant. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other public comments? Sir?
Yeah, Ronald Sina, one forty-nine Feeding Hills Road. I'm going back a few years when the residents that are there have been to many meetings over the past. Seems like the neighbors haven't changed. A lot of the board members have changed. It's kind of sad that the neighbors have to say something, look like the bad guy is here, and the board members have to probably change their plans, look like the bad guy is here. When, when Crepe's Tree House wanted to purchase the building, there was probably twenty people here, also on the neighbors. We had gone back to years when the outside activity really did bother us noise-wise. And it was stated at that time when he purchased the building that we're totally objective, any outside activities going on or noise that we've gone through years prior. And to as well as when they purchased the building, that nothing's going to happen outside. Don't worry about that. We're just building a restaurant. But here we are a few years later, talking about things that have been already built, trying to make things change, fit in the program, on something that makes the neighbors look bad for even commenting on it. We shouldn't have even got started in the first place, as far as I'm concerned. This is where we are now with everybody looking like the bad guy for planners going through. That's going to, sewage is one thing, conservation is one thing, but the bottom line is when you go out of your way to bring people in, you bring noise in, which brings in more cars, more riffraff area, people traveling on my property down the road, which is, you get the water department going down there. Last time they had a wedding here last year, there were people parked on the road, walking up and down the road. So if the water department goes down there to check the power station down there, who responds when somebody gets hit on the road by a town vehicle? It goes on where, where does this thing continue on as far as I'm concerned? Should have never got off the ground without more conservation and more neighbors concerned before it even got built. We're kind of down the road quite a ways before we let it known previously that there's going to be some problem if we got outside, and here we are right now.
Any other public comments? Anybody on Zoom before I move on? Okay. All right. So what's, do you have the next one? Is there anything? That should be fine. Unless you needed something different for time frame to get something, we should be able to talk to town council by June sixth. So I'll leave it up to you whether you want June sixth or if there's something else you were looking to accomplish before then, they can put it onto the next one, which would be June twenty-seventh.
Yeah, we'll go with June sixth.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, we'll put it on for seven ten PM on June sixth. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
We'll do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, aye.
Richard Ossinger, aye.
David Sutton, aye. Dave Spina, aye.
Jessica Thor, aye.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Steve.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
All right, we've got a few minutes to knock off some meeting minutes.
Sure.
Okay.
As far as you want.
Why don't we just do the routine business here? Who's? I guess it's going to be Spina.
He, both he and I can, we'll share the responsibility for our master.
Master plan, yeah, sure, absolutely, yep. Well, let's see, things going on on June, what is it, first?
Yes.
We have a, exactly, yes, did we hear you workshop? And by the way, probably kind of the last opportunity for the public to share their views, make sure that we've taken in all their input and make sure we haven't missed anything crucial. And then on June fifteenth is a workshop session. So the various sections of the master plan have been divided into different folks. And so we're working on those, providing commentary on, on those drafts and then bringing them all together and doing a collective update. You miss anything, man?
There will be a, we are working to put together a second, did we hear you? Session on a Saturday morning to try to offer an alternate time, just as we did for the community outreach meeting where we had two sessions. Looking to pin down an available location. We have to share that with everyone. We'll send it as announcements to people who provided their email and the master plan responses, as well as we'll broadcast it on the website and every means available. Oh, Facebook, there we go.
All right. Thank you. We'll take, we have two sets of meeting minutes, April twenty-fifth and May second. Everybody have an opportunity to take a look at those.
I did.
Okay. April twenty-fifth, do I hear a motion?
So.
Do we want Marcus's name off of the bottom?
Actually, it's actually on the back.
But he's on the second page.
No, we can leave it on there because he was.
Not here voting, and he wasn't actually in attendance at that meeting either?
No, he wasn't. This is the one, oh, this is the one he was absent from.
Correct.
Yeah, we can take him off of that. And we're just doing the practice issue, so that's easy enough.
Yes.
Okay. Do I hear a motion for the April twenty-fifth meeting minutes?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
We'll do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, aye.
Richard Ossinger, aye.
David Sutton, aye. Dave Spina, aye.
Jessica Thor, aye.
All right. Before we move on to May second, just, we put up the flyer for that, did we hear you workshop for the master plan subcommittee? Any, any further information, just reach out to the planning office and we'll certainly direct you to the right place, get you the links or whatever else you need. May second, minutes, any comments before I ask for a motion? Okay, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, aye.
Richard Ossinger, aye.
David Sutton, aye. Dave Spina, aye.
Jessica Thor, aye.
All right.
Pretty efficient, don't work this year.
I, you know. He's getting ready to say something, I can see it right now.
He jumps in his chair every time.
All right. Seven thirty, we have one fifty-nine Berkshire Avenue. I remember this one. Continued public hearing. Did I see, I thought I saw Derek.
Yeah, he's there.
Oh, there he is. So unmute yourself, Derek.
That's not Derek.
No, it's not Derek.
Unmute, okay.
There you go, Derek.
Much better. Thank you, gentlemen and ladies. Ladies first, yes.
Very nice.
Thank you, Derek. Wow, appreciate it.
All right. So I will start with Derek. Where do we stand?
Well, I feel, I feel a hundred percent on this. So what I sent in today was, my opinion, a hundred percent, ready to go.
Okay.
Pretty much construction details.
All right. Any other components that are still needed or are you just completely done? As for absent, you know, comments and work that has to be done with comments, but.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, exactly, just, you know.
All right.
I think it's good enough to go, yep.
Okay. You obviously have not had a chance to look at it.
I can agree with Derek that what he sent over was very detailed. We do need to run through, just to look at his responses to comments, make sure the critical pieces out there. But we are moving forward.
That's what I like to hear. My goal for twenty twenty-three is to wrap this here.
All of us want that. Are we still in twenty twenty-two? No.
I thought they started in twenty-one.
It did.
It's going to be a diff, it's going to, it's going to be difficult when we don't see you, Derek, on a meeting. I mean, it's going to be, we're going to have to get over that. But hopefully we can wrap this up at the next meeting. Well, let me just ask, are you going to have, you and Randy going to have time by June fifth to take a look at it?
Yes.
Okay.
I think we'll have, we'll make the opportunity.
Okay. So why don't we just put this on for seven thirty on?
On June sixth.
June sixth, okay.
Congratulations, Derek.
Before I, but before I, let me just, any board comments? Okay. Any public officials have any comments? Any public comments? Okay.
That was a beast.
Do I hear a motion to continue one fifty-nine Berkshire Avenue to June sixth at seven thirty PM?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
I'll do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, aye.
Richard Ossinger, aye.
David Sutton, aye. Dave Spina, aye.
Jessica Thor, aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Derek. Have a good night.
Thank you. You too. You too.
Why don't we, if we can, just, are we gonna be able to quickly pick out the sign and A and Rs?
Yeah.
Eight minutes? Give it a shot.
There's that piece right there. Let me press the information up online. We have a sign permit application from Jim Marino, provided by Ken Edgerton. Give me just one moment to open here some information. This is to replace the existing sign within the wooden frame on the facade facing Congamon Road. Okay, back to sharing.
There's no boat registration numbers on the boat?
Uh, on the, on the pontoon?
Glad that.
Those are fun. I did go out and confirm with some minor corrections. The dimensions provided by the applicant, looking at the facade area, make sure this is a 10% threshold under this. Uh, it toes the line. Uh, the one correction, the significant one I had to make is that it does include the frame. But Ken's measurements are a little on the conservative side, and I feel comfortable to say that we are at the 10% mark with his proposal. This is a aluminum sign, white background, black lettering, not illuminated. It's an in-kind replacement.
Any questions from the board? Okay.
Looking for a positive recommendation, if that's the board's inclination.
We can check with Marcus, he's right there.
I don't, I don't wanna step on his toes. I gotta swim to some point, right?
Do I hear a motion for a positive recommendation for the sign application for 141 Congamon Road?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, aye.
Richard Ossinger, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Jessica Thornton, aye.
All right, all set. A and Rs.
Let's see what I can grab.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Have a good night, Ken.
We'll do 72 Morgan Road. I left them all in the... Well, let's start the discussion here. We're looking at a farm acreage being owned by Park Fennell. This is adjacent to the number of frontage lots that are split off and the preliminary subdivision plan that was submitted for, or by Oak Ridge Custom Homes. Same applicant for this property that, that developer purchased this former farm. So this acreage right here is on the eastly side of the street, has, it's currently hay field and poked. I see there's evidence of doing so. No issues with site distance or access at this location, and there's sufficient area and frontage.
It's not part of a subdivision, part of a granted subdivision.
No, this is the adjacent property to the north of the preliminary subdivision property.
Okay. All right, so this other land down below is the, is the preliminary. This is...
Okay.
All right, got it. All right. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, aye.
Richard Ossinger, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Jessica Thornton, aye.
All right.
Just to be clear, what was the motion?
You're making me do the language now without Marcus here?
Yeah. You're gonna get my reluctant aye at the end.
Reluctant aye?
Exactly, exactly, aye.
Michael! Motion to endorse the A and R.
Marcus, you're gonna have to show up at every meeting and just tell me the language. That's your job.
Marcus, can you write this stuff down?
I think my replacement will do excellent service.
Yeah, I mean, come on. You're taking over. You gotta take over the duties.
Everybody has a swim now.
Yeah.
Welcome to the pond.
Except for me, apparently. I don't have to learn this stuff. Whatever book you get.
You got your motion and you get volunteered.
24 and 26 Nicholson Hill Road.
Okay, I've got that shared up on the monitor. We are looking at two lots on the north side of Nicholson Hill Road. This is, if you turn onto Nicholson Hill Road from College Highway, the first lot that you come to is wooded, the next one was cleared at some point in the past, and the applicant seeks to combine these two properties.
So you're coming from Morgan Road and coming from College Highway, right?
I'm sorry?
Coming from Morgan Road and...
Coming from College Highway, so if we go past the existing farmhouse...
The Warren Farm, yeah.
I mean, yup. The open acreage, as soon as you hit the tree line, or, sorry, sorry, sorry. The, the forested area, and then right after that, there's an area that was cleared probably several years ago because of the growth. But no, no issues with site distance or access, and we are adding frontage and area.
Yeah. Can we get rid of the barns, same thing?
Uh, if, if only that were, I suppose, directly associated with these properties now.
Party Department of Practice.
All right, do I, any other questions on the board? Okay. Do I hear a motion to endorse Plan 424 and 26 Nicholson Hill Road?
Make a motion to endorse 24 and 26 Nicholson Hill Road.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, aye.
Richard Ossinger, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Jessica Thornton, aye.
Okay.
Is that okay, Marcus?
You got a thumbs up.
You got a thumbs up. We did it.
You wanna leave, you want me to leave him highlighted up there?
You gotta transition.
Marcus, do you have tutelage classes? Maybe we can get, get a couple of us together at night over a cup of coffee and teach us? No? Two thumbs down.
Oh, Jesus.
Much of that plan.
We were supposed to be learning and training along the way.
You know, your meetings are recorded when you go back.
As are yours.
No.
7:40, 662A College Highway. Special permit site plan approval and stormwater management permit public hearing.
How you guys? Mind if I judge your practice?
Please. You have the file or no?
Oh, of course I do. I'm sorry.
Thank you. We're lucky I got the public notice on the...
Some machine, let me pull it, it seems like a story.
All right, notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given in accordance with the provision of Mass General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 11. That the planning board will hold a hybrid public hearing on Tuesday, May 23rd, 2023, at 7:40 PM via Zoom and in the Suffolk Town Hall for, for College Highway. Suffolk Mass on an application by Premier Self-Storage LLC care of Jim Boyle for a special permit site plan approval and stormwater management permit for property located at 662A College Highway Zone Industrial Restricted. The property is shown on Assessor's Map 65, Parcel 26. The applicant proposes to construct a self-storage facility with associated site improvements in accordance with the Code of Suffolk Zoning Bylaws, Chapter 183 and Chapter 185, Sections 9, 10, 19, and 30. Zoom information is provided. A copy of the application and plans may be inspected by contacting John Goddard, Town Planner, at his phone or email. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the matter should appear at the time of manner designated. Michael Doherty, Chairperson, Suffolk Planning Board. Okay, if you could just introduce yourself and then make whatever presentation you may have.
Okay, thank you guys very much for having us here tonight. My name is Jim Boyle. I'm here with my wife Ellen and our new Chris Chamberlain from Berkshire Design. Um, we're here to present a new storage facility at 662A College Highway. We're proposing our facility with two buildings totaling 400 to 475 units and approximately 55,000 square feet. Uh, the property will also have a 480-square-foot office. The property will be managed by an onsite office manager to assist in all aspects of renting a storage unit, and the property will be designed using local tobacco varnasticants such as red. And with that said, I'll turn this over to Chris to go over the more technical aspects of the property.
Uh, Chris Chamberlain, Principal Civil Engineer, Berkshire Design in North Hampton, who's been working on this site for a little while. This property is just a little over a mile up the road on College Highway, 662A, between the O'Reilly Auto Parts that was recently built and the Episcopal Church to the south. This is an approximately three-acre parcel with frontage on College Highway. The front third to half of the property is generally cleared and maintained as a field and relatively flat, and then the rear portion of the site slopes up to a high point roughly in this location here and is primarily wooded. Uh, and then significantly, there's a wetland that divides the front portion of the site right here, and we're currently working through Conservation Commission permitting process as well on that. I'm sure that doesn't fall down. So this is the plan set we submitted, that I assume everyone's at least opened up at least once before tonight.
Chris, I'm just gonna have you hold for one second. Um, John, can you just pull it up so that folks on Zoom can take a look at it as we go along here?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, we are live.
Okay, so, EC0, perfect.
All right, I'll try to keep it in order, the pages. And I'll try to follow, no biggie.
All right, good.
Uh, so this is the site survey, which is pretty much showing what I had just described. You can see from the contour lines, we've got a relatively flat area here, our wetlands that crosses the entirety of the site running roughly north to south, and then a sloping site up to a high point about in this location with the last little bit of this running off to the south, and our frontage and sidewalk on College Highway. And so, jump ahead, past existing conditions, and site preparations. We're gonna go to LC 111, the proposed site, we're already there. Uh, and so the proposed use is, as Jim mentioned, a storage facility. Uh, the, the real main portion of the site is on the back half of the property, setback between 350 to 400 feet from the road to about this location here. That is both because of a deep front yard setback in the zone as well as our wetlands and buffer area associated towards this portion of the site has pushed the development to the back of the site. And then additionally, we're taking advantage of some of that slope so that this front building is actually two stories accessible on the lower end from the front portion of the site on the west, accessible on the upper floor from the east side up here, which is about 10 feet higher than this location. And then we've got a smaller, single-story building in the back. There, and then the third building, a very small office, which is just a location for staff to have a home base and also a place to bring customers who are looking to rent a unit in to sign leasing documents and things like that. Uh, the rear of the site is reached by a driveway coming in along the southern property line, uh, which has parking for the proposed office, really just a couple of spaces. Uh, there's rarely need to visit the office except on your first visit to the site when you're renting a unit. Um, and then proceeding to the east and crossing the wetland. Uh, the location of this driveway was selected so that we could have the shortest possible crossing of that wetland area. Um, and we are also constructing a retaining wall along the south side and head wall on the north side to try to minimize the amount of grading that we have there. But being that this developable upland portion of the site must be crossed in order to get to it, there's allowance under wetland protection to do this work, subject to some mitigation area up here where we're going to replace that wetland's loss again for that Conservation Commission notice of intent process. Uh, I'll note here, one of the comments that, that's going to come up later is the plans as proposed show a 20-foot driveway. Understand that the zoning in this zone requires a minimum of 26 feet. In most of the towns that I work with, that sort of dimension is waivable by the boards. As John's explained, that's not the case here, so that's not something that we can ask for a reduction for. We are evaluating the 26-foot driveway through this area. Uh, you know, we tried to minimize it, given that we have a low-traffic site, that we've got a wetland crossing, have a lot of impacts, try to minimize that. Uh, so we are evaluating whether we can pl- we do that and also considering the possibility of going for a variance if necessary to limit that wetland disturbance. So, um, that is still to be worked out, but I wanted to highlight that since that's a, a comment that would be discussed a little bit, I imagine. Um, so office access is directly off the street through the short driveway to a small parking area with the office building. And then there is an automated vehicle gate at this location here. So people who have a unit within the facility would be able to scan, uh, scan a card, Bob?
Card, code, yeah, card.
A code to open the gate and then proceed into the back of the site. Um, the remainder of the site is not proposed to be fenced, so this is to prevent vehicles from entering the site, so we're not surrounding the facility with fence. Building A, as I described, takes advantage of those, those two sets of grades. Uh, here, I'm actually gonna flip ahead to the grading bank where some of our elevations become a little bit more clear. So coming in relatively flat along this driveway with, say, 2% slopes, and then climbing just a little bit to get to this lower level parking area, not parking area, driveway area, really. Uh, we've got drives, as would be typical for a storage facility, surrounding each of the buildings. Where those drives are generally flat, we have exterior-facing units, but there are two sloped driveways to make up that 10-foot changing grade from lower to higher through this area, which would not have exterior units. Um, we've also indicated the planned entrances for these buildings to access the interior units of which there, there are a number interior to the site. So this is a little bit different of a facility than sort of the more traditional version where there's a lot of long silos with outward-facing units all over the place. One thing you may note is that down in this portion of the site, we have a number of contour lines as the bottom portion of the site has been lifted up. Uh, there's a couple of reasons for that, one of them zoning-related, one of them project design-related. Um, Chris, there's the, the special permit requirement when the project proposes a net cut of 1,000 cubic yards. Uh, when we first laid out the site, I made all the grades work really nicely with the existing topography, but then when we had to cut the site to create the lower level of this building, uh, we had, I think, 4,000 yards of cut, which we wanted to avoid the special permit if possible, and that would have been very expensive, so it's better to keep that on-site. And so, uh, we ended up raising this site about two feet on average through the back portion of the site in order to be able to reuse a lot of that material, particularly under these driveways, uh, and to try to get to a balanced site, and we're pretty close to balance, cut and fill there. Um, there are a few spots where, because, actually, I should back up a moment because it's relevant to this. The setbacks on the side yards for this property, previously Jim went to ZBA and requested a variance, so there's been granted a reduced setback on the north and south property lines. We're maintaining the zoning-van dated setback to the building on the rear and to the front, and this office is just beyond that 75-foot front setback, so set, well, back from the, from College Highway.
What are the setbacks on the side?
And that in table, I don't have it attributed to memory, unfortunately. So, minimum setback sides, the zoning mandated is 35 feet, the variance was granted down to 15, but in fact, we're close to 30 on the side. So while we did get the variance, not quite knowing exactly how the site was gonna shake out, we're actually only beyond that setback line by a little bit on both the north and So, we have a couple of locations I wanna highlight with retaining walls. As you can see, we made up most of the grades with just slope, all of these slopes are set at three to one, that's sort of the maximum that I like to try to keep to, because then that's something that can be mowed, maybe not especially easily, but definitely amenable to maintenance. But there were a few spots pinched up against the O'Reilly site right here, where we've got up to four, five-foot retaining wall here. And then along this wetland crossing, where we're climbing to the rear of the site and also trying to minimize our footprint here, this is again about a four-to-five-foot retaining wall. In both of those cases, we're proposing timber guardrail where there's a drop-off, both for, you know, vehicle protection on one side, and the timber sort of blends in a little bit more aesthetically with sites than the metal guardrail. And then there's also gonna be fencing at the top of that where, let me, sorry, this has gone through a couple of iterations. We, embarrassingly, I try to remember which detail we finally made on here. So this is the typical retaining wall detail, where we've got the segmental blocks stacked to make up the change in grade, and we're doing the timber guardrail along the edges with the roadway edge, then beyond that. And given that we don't have pedestrian walks, that this is primarily for vehicles, and that we've got a setback to the top of the wall, we're not proposing fencing at the top of those walls. This is the style of wall, sort of the medium block, versalock-type wall that we have along the wetland crossing. The wetland crossing itself, while we're on this sheet, is an open-bottom culvert that's sized for more than the minimum opening required by the Army Corps permit for wetland crossings. And then on that sort of main portion of the site, where we have a little bit more flexibility, because we don't have the wetland impacts, is a larger block, gravity wall that can be set a little bit more vertically and is a really stable option up there. Again, we've got timber guardrail where we've got driving surface next to that drop-off. And then we do have some wall in the southeast corner of the site, where the neighbor is higher than us, and so that is wooded area to the side of it, so not really accessible. So we've just got the retaining wall to make up grade there, again, going from, it's about, what is it, six-and-a-half feet at its highest, down to zero on this short span here. The site plan directs stormwater from most of the site towards the wetland area in the center of this front portion of the site. Obviously, it's an undeveloped site now, and we need to mitigate the impacts of the previous area. And so, we are accomplishing that through three stormwater devices. There are two open infiltration basins, as well as one subsurface infiltration basin, this one at the rear capturing really just this small building here and the pavement around it, and matching the discharge currently from this small portion of the site to the east. And the remainder of the site being captured in these large basins and then discharging toward this wetlands and exiting the site. We are designed to balance runoff compared to the existing condition for the 210 and 100-year storm. And through the comment period, it's come up that we apply the incorrect design storms compared to the local standard for this project. We've been using the Atlas 14 average numbers for stormwater, which is sort of the climate change projected numbers onto the future for a while. So when we saw Atlas 14, we looked no further and missed the plus piece of that. And so, if we go by the Atlas 14 plus iteration, what we had designed for an eight-and-a-half-inch 100-year storm becomes an 11-and-a-half-inch storm. We've run preliminary calculations, we do seem to have enough room to make some space. We had initially designed this large infiltration basin relatively inefficiently so that we could essentially capture every drop of water that came off the site and infiltrate it. But through techniques for outlet control and controlling the discharge above the 2-year storm, we're able to create a lot more storage space while still meeting our infiltration requirements, our water quality requirements. So we do have some work to do redesigning this a little bit per those standards, but early returns are, we're pretty close. And we're talking about most likely marginal changes, but, you know, final design to be determined there. And then each of these basins is pretreated either with a storm scepter, water quality unit, or in this case, sediment for bay to settle out some of those solids and protect the infiltration basin so it can keep doing its work. While we do have relatively shallow groundwater in this front portion of the site because of the wetland, the test pits have shown that it drops off pretty rapidly as we move to the east. So we've got decent groundwater conditions here, and the whole site is pretty sandy, so we're happy to be able to design around infiltration. Always makes my life easier when we can stick a lot of that water underground. Other utilities are primarily running up the driveway. And here, I'm gonna flip to the next page, which is the utility plan. And so, we have water, we have domestic water service only to the office. There is no domestic water service to the storage buildings in the rear. We will have a fire protection, water connection to the storage buildings, which will require to be sprinkled. And we are also bringing power and gas up the driveway. The intention is to bury the electric so long as the utility allows it. Presumably because of this long run, we'll be looking to do a primary run into the site, and sometimes they have issues going underground when it's the primary. So that's our intention unless another utility says no. And then finally, we have septic system, again, just for that office building, where would be a restroom for staff. This has been designed based on the office use in this case. There was a question in the comments about whether it's sized for customers, and I can say, beyond that. This is a very small building, but the minimum size that you can do a septic system for an office building is 200 gallons per day, and there is no way we're gonna come anywhere close to that, even if everybody and their brother comes through to use the bathroom. Next page, we have planting. And here, there's sort of three components to this planting plan. First to note, we did discover that the Episcopal Church's hedge that currently exists along this property line is actually trespassing onto this property. When you go out there, it's not clear how angled the property lines are, so certainly an innocent mistake. So Jim is just going to, with the church's permission, go ahead and lift those up and just move them onto their side of the line, just as they are. Hopefully, we'll try to get those reestablished and they can just stay as they are, that line of screening on their side. On our side of this property line, where we're close to the line, there's evergreen screening, which is primarily arborvitae with a mix of American holly in there. Half of our practice as landscape architects, we hate doing a line of arborvitae soldiers, so I always push my clients to let us do something else in there to mix it up. So we're happy to have something that'll be green all year round, adds a little bit of aesthetic interest. Along the street, we're proposing four black tupelo street trees, close to the sidewalk. As they grow, will provide some shade and also provide screening for these views up into the site. And then the remainder of the site is really focused on wetland enhancement plantings. There's the area of wetland mitigation, which has some very carefully selected wetland species to try to get this to look, act, and operate as a true wetland. And then, given that this site was pretty well-cleared to begin with, and we've got some buffer impacts, we've proposed quite a lot of trees that are going to go in very small, one-gallon, two-gallon pot sizes, so that we can plant many, many of them and allow them to come up and create a pretty decent corridor eventually along this wetland area. So we've got four lines of things, and these are species primarily willows, as well as, that's the other one. And, yeah, oh, sorry, black willow, that's the one I found, that's the other one here. And silky dogwood. So we're, well, on day one, these are gonna be baby trees, maybe as this area really will grow in to renaturalize, and for the most part, this will be a do-not-touch area. All the disturbed areas, with the possible exception of just a little bit of traditional lawn right around the office to keep things a little bit neater. All the other disturbed areas are proposed to be planted with a native seed mix from New England Wetland Plants in Amherst, which we've had really great success with. The intention is to leave it a meadowy kind of final condition to be mowed once or twice a year, just to keep the woody vegetation and everything out and the bases down, but otherwise to sort of replicate what we're starting with in the front of this site with that sort of meadowy field condition that's minimally maintained. We submitted a traffic evaluation statement. This is a storage facility, there's very little traffic, despite many, many units in the site. They're visited infrequently, based on Institute of Traffic Engineering numbers. We're looking at a peak hour of 17 trips, that includes both the ins and the outs, so you can imagine that something like eight visitors in the busiest hour of the week coming in and then leaving. And again, that's sort of why we had gone with the narrower driveway that we may have undo and minimal parking spots. We did not, as has come up in the comments, delineate clear parking spots or traffic patterns around here. That's typical of storage facilities. If you look at a lot of storage facilities, there's no striping whatsoever. That said, appreciate with the idea that there are some concentrated locations here of people coming in and out and the larger building, that the comments about, you know, better defining circulation and parking locations so that site access isn't impacted are well-taken, is something we've already started to look into. And again, there's a few odds and ends that have come up through the comments that we're still looking at how to address, and that's gonna be one of them. So we are looking to add a little bit better definition in that area. And that is all I had prepared, but we're happy to answer any questions that you got at this point.
Well, I got some, but let me turn to the board. Any questions?
Good.
A few.
Is the back building gonna have 24-hour lighting or lighting that'll work back there?
All the lighting is on demand, so if you come in front of it...
Like motion activated?
Yeah, and then it comes off. The units, we're gonna have, they're gonna only be accessible till 10 o'clock at night, and then after that, everything will just be off, but, you know, the lights will come on and off.
Okay, in the front buildings, we'll have what, the lighting?
Same thing, so they'll all come on and off.
And we did have a lighting plan, it wasn't ready at the time we made the submission, it's ready now, but some other thing that came up with the comments, we're submitting that as a follow-up information.
Thank you. Anything else to?
No.
The places to access, I guess the interior of the, I'll call it the middle building, right, I think you pointed to some side doors?
Yes. So, the lower level, there are two side doors here, and the upper level, there are two side doors here. The interior space has not been detailed designed at this point. Jim has, you know, plans of roughly how the unit layout is gonna shake out, but you can imagine that, you know, there's a continuous corridor from door to door, which then branches off as necessary to make that work. And then similarly, this building has, would have a continuous corridor from door to door, the two entrance doors at the ends there.
At each door, is there anything to prevent somebody walking blindly into a, called an active roadway? Railings, ballards, something like that?
So what do you mean, when you leave the door?
Yeah, yeah, when you're walking out, I mean, not really a sidewalk there that I can see or anything.
What one would consider a loading area, because we don't have those delineated areas of parking.
Yeah, and so what, and we worked on a very similar project, this was with Jim, a few months ago up in Greenfield, and what we ended up with is sort of striping those areas adjacent to the door where we can avoid impacting the outward-facing units too much. And where the doors are located, the swing of larger vehicles is gonna be out and around, so that doesn't disrupt that traffic pattern if we sort of designate that as parking into our loading zone. And again, it's gonna be rare for more than two or three cars to be on the site at one time, so as part of that delineation process, we'll show a little bit more clearly how we can achieve that.
If there is a large vehicle loading, can another vehicle get by it?
Yes, so we had submitted some turning movements, we have seen some comments that, you know, we may need to look a little bit more detailed in that, although I think we're at worst case, talking about a foot or two of movement in the east-west direction if there's concern about that. But yeah, so if you imagine the way a large vehicle would come through, it's gonna be tight to the corners, and then in order to make the radius of that turn wider, swings to the outside. The smallest dimension off the building is about 25 feet in all these.
So small, so the personal vehicle, can I get by the big truck at the same area, is that correct?
So there...
Yeah, I mean, the minimum space is 25 feet, so any two vehicles can pass by each other. And I think in some of the spots, even at 30 feet.
Yes.
So, I mean, it's, the usual space is 25 feet in most storage facilities, and that's ample room for two little cars to get by, two big trucks or whatever.
And it's also very unusual for large trucks to be coming through, it's typically personal vehicles.
So how many stor... Oh, go ahead, Jim, sorry.
It's the fire chief here. The, is that enough room for one of your rigs to get around there, whatever?
So, given the drawing that was presented to us, it shows the lines with them actually touching the barricades that are designed in the drawing, so I'm gonna say no, that it's not enough, but even access into this facility is very difficult for fire apparatus. And once you're in there, you're in there. So fire apparatus, the trap, that's my biggest concern. So there are other concerns that I'll share with you, but as far as to address your question with turning raises, it would be very difficult. We tried to purchase vehicles that are maneuverable through some of the narrow streets here, but the narrow street doesn't have the drop-offs that we're seeing on the sides and so on and so forth, where that could be a problem for bumpers and other equipment.
Yeah. How many, so is any of the stores accessible from the exterior, or is it all interior?
Some of the units are accessible from the exterior along this portion of the here, this wall, and then on the sides of this building.
You can actually see on the red rig, the door at the bottom.
The white.
Yeah, they're in white, and at the top, it's generally the same, so the whole top section has exterior doors following it, and then there's a hallway. There's more hallways than we actually need, we have more doors than we need for fire.
But overall, how many units are there gonna be, storage units?
Well, we have, it's like 450 to 500, and we haven't finalized it yet. We have a couple layouts that show the hallways and stuff like that, but usually, that gets determined as you're designing the building because of sprinkler systems, heating areas where you have to put your heating, so, I mean, I'll have, I can have better information on the next meeting.
How many, how many floors is this?
That's two floors.
It's two floors.
It's kind of like a lot, so, and then when you pull into a driveway, and your house slopes back down in the back, so when you walk to the back, when you look up, it looks like a couple floors, but in your driveway, it's just one. That's kind of what we're doing there.
So the front will have access on the
So the front will have access on the bottom, on the first floor?
Yeah.
But there's no way to travel from the first floor to the second floor?
No, not inside. You have to go up the driveway and go enter from the upper level.
Or from the back?
Yeah.
Is this building heated and cooled, or heated or what?
Heated, heated and cooled.
Okay.
And the back building is a single floor building with just one center hallway. It's that building right there on the bottom, and that has all outside spaces, and then the inside area with the hallway has the spaces just off the hall.
Could you put a picture from on the bottom? Thank you.
So what do you plan on using for heating and cooling equipment?
Just standard heaters and standard bases.
What do you plan on putting the outdoor condensers?
Usually, we would attach them to the building.
So that would reduce your footprint going around the building also?
Not really, because they'll probably go right behind the stairways. So there's two stairways that we're proposing.
Yes, so again, we're looking in this area here, along the straightaway, and again, with the access aisle leading to the outside.
So what's the space between the railing and your property line, or your edge of your road? Be back to fifteen feet again?
No. Sorry, which dimension?
Between the railing and the edge of the driveway.
Railing and the edge of the driveway.
On both north and south.
Right.
Correct.
Right, so, okay, now I understand, from this railing to this driveway. Yeah, so that would be twenty-one feet. We've got a five-foot walkway and then one foot width to the wall.
And there's no fence going around the property?
Correct.
So here's my question, which is, so you have exterior access on the front, on the back of both of them. So unless someone's parking in front of someone else's storage area, they're going to have to park on the north or south?
Drive place.
Correct? I mean, someone, to go into the interior storage, they need to park somewhere.
Yeah.
And there's no parking anywhere. That's, that's the problem I have, is that, I mean, it's not like they're, I get it if, it would make a little bit more sense if it was all exterior storage, right, and you could park in front of your space or things like that, right? That usually works out okay, though it's not ideal, but it usually works out okay, especially with the larger units. But a majority of this is interior. People need to park somewhere.
So if you could imagine the neighborhood, and so you pull up in, you're up at the, let's just say the bottom so we can see. So if you're here, when the people come, and let's just say there's somebody parked here, you know, bringing some stuff inside, when somebody, I mean, the chances that somebody comes and there's a jack spot or a slip, but if they do, typically you just pull up and the person coming in here isn't like hanging out in their spot, so they're usually bringing something in and out, and it's really actually short. So the average stop here is just a, maybe just a few minutes. When people move, they're there for a little bit longer, but when somebody parks, it's, they just do their thing and they kind of leave. And, you know, we ran one for six months, my cousin ran one for ten years, and typically when you're in there, it's very kind, and if somebody needs to move, it's very rare, but they just do.
But here's, I, so, I would say maybe that would make sense if that's where the entrances were for the interior storage, but they're not?
No, it isn't.
In the front?
Yes, so, right here, there's a door to enter the whole building, and I have two on the sides for convenience, but all we really need is this one door.
So you have three doors?
Yeah, we have three doors. So we have this door, the main door that most people will use, and even here, you can park here and just walk into the side and do your thing there, also. But there's a door to enter right here, and you just enter, and you enter the whole building.
Is that main door secured?
Yeah. And then up at the top, it's a reverse of the saying. So up at the top, there's a door to enter the top, and there's two side doors.
So that, you come in from the backside, and you're heading toward the front where that red is, the red stripe, the red second floor?
Yeah.
Is this going to be a series of hallways?
Yeah.
How are they going to, if somebody's in that end of the building and something happens to the other end of the building, how are they getting out?
Well, we're within the range we're supposed to be.
Yeah, repeat the question.
They just walk out.
If you have a series of hallways up there, because you're coming in from the backside, there's no side entrances to this building up in the front, on the second floor?
No, there is.
Way up in the air?
Yeah, no, they're, they're right here.
That's on the ground.
That's right.
How do you get up to the second floor from that front entrance?
You know.
All right, well, let me just put you in my favor.
Okay, so, so you have an entire floor...
You're going to come in either here or here to get to the second floor.
It's not being accessed by that front door.
Here and there.
You've got, you've got this here down here.
The front's always, the second floor's always being accessed by the back of the building.
Well, maybe something over here to get in.
Yeah.
So this corridor is going down here?
You'd have to use the sides.
Is this a straight corridor down?
Yeah, it comes down. It grants us off the conversation.
Yes, correct.
So what happens if there's a fire here? Where do these people go?
I thought you said there's like two doors.
There's a fire here.
The three doors on the front.
Where's your room over here?
One on the front and one on the side.
Hallway?
And on the back, it's exactly the same, one on the back, one on the side, on the upper level.
That's the whole point.
Well...
Okay, that's a fair, good question.
That was the point, there's no way to get out, unless you back, back, go back the way you came. That's all I was trying to find out, that's it.
Well, we, we gave it to an architect to check for egress.
Good, still, I wanted the answer to my question. And you gave it to me, thank you.
Is there a door in the back of that front building?
Yeah.
All right, so there's a door in the front, door in the back, and one on each of the sides.
Yeah.
Handling different floors. Three, three doors handle the first floor, two doors in the way back handle the second floor, will be the second, the second level.
Three doors, and they don't use floor.
The front is actually two floors.
So there's three, no, no, I'm talking, so the front building only?
Mm-hmm.
In the back, in the back, no, in the, in the back of the front building, how many doors are on that side?
On the back?
Yes, one. That's the only way to get to the top level?
No, one on each side.
One on each side.
Okay, the two side doors allow access to the top level.
It's mirrored, so the bottom level is the same except...
These retaining walls are here as the driveway drops away to allow a flat walkway over to these entrances to get to the top.
So there's three entrances to the top level?
Mm-hmm.
And for the bottom level, there's...
Three.
So there's six doors total.
Mm-hmm.
One in the middle, for the bottom level, there's one in the middle on this side.
Yeah.
And where are the other two?
No, one is in the middle on the front.
One in the middle and the front, on the white stripe.
And one on each side.
One on each end.
And one on each side.
On the white stripe. And then where the...
I mean, maybe I'm missing something, and maybe it's not there. I can't see the other...
Can you just point to where the doors are going to be?
Yeah.
And I have to, I'm, this is not, Jim, this is my missed coordination, is our plan does not show the door here and here right now.
Okay, and show the side doors also.
And then those are here?
Yeah.
For the upper level?
Yeah.
And then here for the lower level.
So somebody goes in through the back on the upper level, can he walk all the way to the top of the front?
Yes.
Does that lower level go all the way to the rear of the building?
No.
No.
Just the first half or...
No, no, it's not within country.
So it's...
No, I think you're answering a different question than he's asking. The, the lower level of this building is the full footprints.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so that, that lower level goes all the way to the, to the rear of the building?
Yeah.
Okay.
But the hallway does not, the hallway only goes one seventy-five.
Are there internal access only units on the first floor, and also exterior access?
You cannot go from the upper level to a low level without going outside, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
All right. So Chief, are you getting any thoughts about the egress in this building?
I haven't looked at it yet.
While we come to public comments, I'll address it.
Yeah, he has comments that I can read in. I just wanted to at least start with the board, and then we can read stuff in. But any other board questions or comments before we move along?
Yeah.
All right, I'm going to defer some of my stuff here. I'm going to read. Let me read in some public official comments here. I'm not going to read in all of yours. Do you have yours? You can put it up there after?
Mine, sure.
Okay. Once you get to page three, I, I should say no.
Big font, big font.
All right, so, South Fire Department, Chief Stefanowitz asked Fire Prevention Officer Brian Schneider to look at the plans. His comments are provided. It says, "Per your request, after reviewing the plans, I have the following concerns. First bullet point, narrow diameter of driveway to and around buildings. Second, any vehicle parked at the units eliminates any possibility of fire apparatus access. Third, close proximity of fire apparatus to building if a fire were to happen. Fourth, turning radius for three sixty access for fire apparatus. And fifth, lack of building plan for the buildings on site." Chief, if you have anything else to add about that, or just to add more detail, please do.
Certainly, so, Fire Prevention Officer Brian Schneider and I met and discussed a couple of these things, and I had him just take a look at it on his own without any discussion prior to, to see if we came up with anything different, but a lot of it was similar in ways. So as far as accessibility is concerned, one way in, one way out, on a very narrow, tight street. I brought up the streets earlier, and keep in mind, when you're turning the street, the house isn't right on the curb. This building would be right on the curb, so there is really no extra space to turn around. If I were to commit fire apparatus into that parking lot, and it's any area in there, and the fire grew, it's going to be impossible to migrate out, back out, we'd never be able to turn the apparatus around and back it out. It just, it's not feasible. And add to that snow, okay, because as much as we like to say that there's a snow collection area, that means the snow removal is going to be every inch of snow and every piece of pavement up there to get it out of there. So there's no snow storage up there, and it's not, if you have these barricades around the building, then I could be able to plow through or around and push it away. So that means you're going to truck all the snow out of there. I'm suspect that that would happen, as would be necessary in order to maintain the open roads as designed. The turning radiuses that were given to us are very tight, and I don't know if we would be able to navigate them safely. The building itself seems to take up every available square inch of building property up there. It doesn't allow for any distance otherwise, and so it's already maxed out, so there's really nowhere else to go. I'm also concerned about the built-up areas in the back with the retaining walls, as well as where the solid construction type would be of the actual total capacity of the building. There's definitely barriers. What do specs would do on that, if people were supporting fire apparatus? Specifically speaking, I'll just go through the rest of my notes as well to add to Brian's. We talked about limited access.
And Chief, I can read it, I apologize, because I didn't see your email, I just saw his. So now that I've seen yours, I'm happy to read, I need to read it in anyway, so, you don't need to...
Why don't you do that first, and then I can adjust?
Yeah, if there's anything else you want to add, let me do that. So, this is dated May ninth. Here are my initial concerns for the proposed self-storage on six sixty-two College Highway. First, extremely limited access with only one way in and out. Second, no room for placement of fire apparatus too close to the structure and trapped inside the fence. Third, turning radius are extremely tight based on model presented. Fourth, no fire protection supply line to Building B shown. Does require full sprinkler system at seventy-five hundred square feet. Fifth, fire department connection would need to be away from the building, preferably freestanding at the property entrance. Sixth, no available parking around the two self-storage buildings, which restricts access if there are any customer cars in the driveway area. Seventh, elevation changes and walkout could impact access. Eighth, no place to put the snow during snow removal. Ninth, the buildings and driveways cover nearly every buildable square foot of the back part of the property. And tenth, massive storage building, we know construction detail or drawings to reference. Chief, was there anything else you wanted to add?
So, just to address the question on egress, typically the building department has purview over egress, and the fire department does double check to make sure that the egress meets our part of the code, that we start off with a foundation of building officials. I will say that, given the design, and to address just the concern of being in a windowless building, that, I'm assuming has a generator? So you could lose electricity, somebody could be in that building in the middle of a fire, and be approximately two hundred feet from a doorway.
No, not enough. We have, you just, you can pull it up, there's a door, that emergency exit, without power.
No, the door would open, but I'm saying, that person is in a dark building with no windows, no lights.
I believe those are battery operated if they're in an emergency.
The, the exit lights and the emergency lights are, what I'm saying is, you would have to lay every single inch of those corridors. Based on, again, we don't have drawings to show where the corridor placements are, or the stairs to get from one level to the next. So you, what I'm saying is, you could literally be in the heart of that building, okay, in a power outage, in a fire, and be two hundred feet from an exit.
I'm sorry, sir, but we have that covered.
Okay. Well, I'm going to bring in the concern early, because it's not shown here or anywhere else. None of it's shown. So we're looking at the special permit for the footprint, but that's on addressing the concern of egress and becoming a priority. I would typically share some of the concerns.
The last times, the last couple times, definitely did, we met with these guys, and I met with you guys after, and you went over the building and stuff like that.
So the only other concern I had, I think it's not, the fire department connection. So that would need to definitely be in the front of the building, probably by your office building, only because, again, I'm not going to commit fire apparatus up towards that building in the event that there's a fire, because it's, it's one way in, one way out, and moving carries would be trapped in there, cut off, and not access, and the exit. Preferably, to, to me the egress into that area where the buildings are is preferred and desirable. But also, again, addressing the twenty-foot width of the road, I'm assuming that that will be addressed. Twenty feet is not enough.
Anything else, Chief?
That's it for now.
Okay, thank you. All right. The police department had no input regarding the project, deferring to the fire department with respect to the width of the driveway, and the request of waiver, though we talked about that before. That was from Paul Miles. DPW, from Randy Brown, DPW reviewed the stormwater report and plans for six sixty-two A College Highway dated four fourteen twenty-three. Est repair by Versier Design Group, and offers the comments below. I recognize that some of these comments may not necessarily be related to your respective department, but in order to keep an open dialogue, I am including all of DPW's comments into this one list. One, Table one in the stormwater report shows rainfall values that don't appear to meet the town's standards, which require NOAA Atlas fourteen plus rain events. This analysis should be updated, we talked about that. Two, it does not appear that the requirements for the ninety percent TSS and sixty percent total phosphorus removal were met for all points of discharge. The calculations in Appendix E show eighty percent TSS removal for infiltration basin one. Further, no calculations are provided for the discharges through the dry well, and no calculations are provided showing total phosphorus removal at any discharge location. This analysis should be updated. Three, it does not appear that test pits or borings were performed in the area of infiltration basin one. Subsurface information is necessary to verify the suitability of soil conditions for infiltration and to confirm that adequate separation of groundwater is being provided. This information should be obtained and included with the design. Four, the domestic water service and fire services shall be separate connections from the water main on College Highway. Five, Sheet LC five oh one Detail one, the anti-tracking pad shall be at least fifty feet long. Six, Sheet LC five ten Detail nine, the concrete sidewalk shall be a minimum of six inches thick for the section crossing the driveway. Seven, Sheet LC five oh four Detail one, the domestic water service shall be one inch minimum. Eight, the applicant shall confirm whether any items that contain fuel, such as cars or boats, are proposed to be stored on the property. Nine, the applicant shall secure a trench permit, driveway permit, and new water service permit from DPW prior to construction. And ten, the applicant shall secure an access permit from Mass DOT for any work within and right-of-way of College Highway prior to construction. All right, we can pause for a minute if you, if there's any responses or anything to discuss about those comments. You have the floor, either the applicant or you, Chris.
Sure. So, nothing quite there. In terms of the interim portions of the building, I think we're going to have to come back with answers. I'm not an architect. I know Jim has been working with an architect in terms of meeting the building code, so I'm not prepared to respond to that. The turning radius, we started to take a second look at that. The, I generally start these projects using a standard vehicle out of tracking software because it's too easy to tweak a number the wrong way doing custom vehicle and trip yourself into having a better model than you think you do. So we used a 40-foot vehicle with conservative wheel spacing and turning radius. This morning, in light of the comments from the fire department, we did create a custom vehicle based on the actual aerial tower, which has a slightly longer length than the vehicle that we had used because of the bucket that sticks off the back, but a substantially shorter wheel span and found it more maneuverable. The preliminary result was that we were making all of those turns with two feet of clearance outside the envelope. However, I appreciate the comments of a little bit more detail here tonight. I think certainly Jim and I are going to take a closer look at that and see what we can do to improve. As I was mentioning earlier, at a minimum, there is an opportunity to very simply increase some of the distances in the east-west direction. But, you know, I think, having heard these comments, we're going to talk about the building and look into that, and certainly that's important. The, let's see, the stormwater, I addressed the design storm issue. We're working on resolving that. The water quality issue, here we get into a little bit of disagreement between the state's Stormwater Handbook and some of the newer regulations that Southwick and some other towns have been rolling out. So the Stormwater Handbook has standard water quality factors for different features, and the factor for infiltration basin is 80% TSS removal. Except the world is going to a place where we require 90% of TSS removal. So one could infiltrate every last drop of water on site and technically fail to meet that. The stormwater regulations, which I had talked to Randy about, he actually deferred to John on interpretation of this, appear to state that as long as we are infiltrating the first inch of runoff off of impervious areas, and we're infiltrating much more than that, then we are deemed in compliance with the water quality standards, regardless of any actual detailed calculations. Now.
All right. Well, you can take, you can take a moment and think or take a look at the comments. I'm going to, I changed my mind. I want you to pull up your letter, but I'm going to read it in, even though it contains Latin.
Does it?
And.
Make sure you say it.
I, you know. But at least it's up so that people can look at it, and if I choose to bail somewhere around 9 or 10, I can do so.
Understood.
But I do think it brings up a lot of good points for everybody to discuss. All right, this is a letter dated May 15th from John Goddard to Christopher Chamberlain. This is our plan of orders and receipt of applications, plans, and supporting materials for the above reference projects on College Highway. I have the following review notes, comments, questions to share with you from my role. One, the property is zone industrial restricted. The proposed self-storage use is allowed by special permit in that zoning district. Public storage of goods and fireproof warehouses is the language from the bylaw. As your application reflects, the office building provides an appropriate number of off-street parking spaces based on its area and the table of uses. Two, the application narrative includes two requested waivers from certain site plan approval requirements in the industrial restricted zone, seeking relief from the required 26-foot drive aisle width, a 20-foot two-way proposed, and a 10-foot separation distance with a 5-foot proposed between parking spaces and buildings. However, the town bylaw as written does not provide the board with the flexibility to issue waivers for these requirements on a case-by-case basis. Three, the plans indicate citing of buildings based on a variance issued by the Board of Appeals on November 14, 2022. The variance does not appear to be recorded or perhaps indexed, not indexed correctly. If it hasn't been recorded, please do so and provide the book and page numbers. Did we get that or no?
No.
Okay. Okay. No. Four, under Section 185-30A1A, it says, "Whenever feasible, parking area shall be located to the side or rear of the structure and not within the front yard of a structure." The applicant should provide justification for the proposed configuration with parking in front of the office building. Five, wheel stops or other design elements should be utilized to prevent overhang of the pedestrian walk by parked vehicles as required under Section 185-30A2B. Six, as a project subject to site plan approval per Section 185-19, the requirements of Section 185-10 are also drawn in. In order to adequately assess impacts to the neighborhood, preliminary architectural elevations are required for 185-10A3. Seven, preliminary architectural information pertaining to the floor plan would be helpful to determine the configuration area and method of access for the lower level of the main storage building. Further, the area of the lower level may trip the gross floor area threshold for the major development. Review bylaw 185-9.1. The information is provided where to find that. A preliminary review of the proposal indicates that the gross new impervious surface area threshold is tripped for applicability under 185-9.1C2B, but it is assumed that the Class 7 traffic component is not tripped. Please review these thresholds and confirm. Eight, vehicular circulation around the proposed storage buildings is currently undefined, although it appears that further coordination with SFD, Southfire Department, will be required based on initial feedback. It may be helpful to consider one-way traffic that doesn't make client parking slash loading areas any required fire lanes and provide a method to protect access egress from the building doorways and prevent them from being inadvertently blocked. Nine, the proposal does not include information on site elimination. If the structures will have lights affixed to the exterior walls, please provide a photometric calculation plan depicting the elimination spread in foot candles. Ten, how will waste be managed as generated at the office and storage buildings? Eleven, what will be the hours of operation for the office and storage components? Twelve, off-street parking spaces are shown at 9 feet by 18 feet. However, 10 feet by 20 feet spaces are required under 185-30A2A. Thirteen, is the soil absorption system size to manage any client use at the office building bathrooms? Fourteen, please provide a description of how spills would be managed and/or contained at the facility. And fifteen, with the Latin. At least one male, Felix Salata.
Read like an engineer.
Is recommended amongst the plantings of that species to optimize winter fruit production for wildlife. Okay. So with that, and certainly you can address other things too, but is there anything else that you wanted to add tonight?
I think we could go point by point, but obviously, as I said even in the presentation, that there are modifications to be made. I think that will address a number of these, and then we can just say we did it instead of going through how we're going.
Understood. And it's more for, if there was disagreements or if there was things that further fleshed out, certainly now would be an opportunity to do it. You can also call John or whoever that public official is and talk to them about it as well. And I'd certainly recommend, based on some of the input tonight, you know, to have those conversations. Everybody's certainly willing to talk and work through things, so.
Definitely. Yeah, I think at a minimum, we'll be reaching out to the chief and looking at.
I would like to add, though, that I, when I've been trying to develop these projects, there's a million places you can start, but there's not ever the right place to start. So typically in the past, we started here, and then, once I got some feedback from you guys, we would take the building to the fire, to the other people that we had to. Now, before I came here, I had my architect check the egresses. My fire sprinkler people checked the egresses. They sent it out. They checked the egresses. So I came in here thinking that our egresses are sufficient for what we have in our mass storage units. We had emergency lights in the hallways of all the buildings, so if the lights went out, the lights just snapped on. So I didn't know that I had to have that information tonight, and that's why I had to.
And that's, and that's fine. I mean, it's a process, so I mean, it's certainly, it's intended to be that.
Yeah, I wasn't trying to hide or bring in focus access to the building.
Understood. All right, so let me, I guess I'm going to turn back and see if there's any board comments before I.
Is that the width of the lot? Is that the whole width of the lot? Are you, do you have any more room to expand width-wise, or is that it?
This is the width of the lot.
It's a small lot.
Yeah, it's tight.
Yeah. Yeah, and given the address at 662A, I'm assuming this was cut off from a larger piece of land not that long ago.
Is that design, for a backhoe, the owner's design you had, it can make it more, a little more, let's say, friendly, you know? More country-friendly?
I'm going to defer to this guy. I do not give a standing of people.
I thought tobacco bar would work here.
Yeah, we don't have any large tobacco bars.
Huh?
We don't have any large tobacco bars.
But having worked with Jim, I can tell you, he's open to suggestions on that front, for sure.
All we're trying to do is develop a beautiful project that works for the community, that we can have staff that is properly protected by fire, by the fire chief. I mean, I'm going to be in this town, we're not at a corporation, it's me and my wife. So we're in the town, you know, for the line run app for two minutes.
I just wanted to, because one of my big concerns is addressing the chief's maneuverability around the buildings, as well as safety for the people who are there, who are accessing the buildings. So parking and identifying where loading areas are. Whether you expect multiple people to be there at one point in time, all it takes is one person to be parked in front of the wrong space for a fire truck to not be able to pull in and properly extinguish something. So with that in mind, I wanted to point out, within our bylaw, an area where it says that we shouldn't have any exterior parking spaces be closer to any building on the property than 10 feet. So we're already talking about a very narrow driveway, and we're asking for identified parking spaces, but keep that in mind when it comes to the design guidelines as well. That's also in that same spot where we're not allowed to alter the 26 feet in width, so we might be limited on our ability to modify that.
Wouldn't it be a trash, something like a dumpster or anything like that onsite? Would there be any onsite like that?
I just got the bottom part.
Yeah, this, as we were putting the plans together, after they went in, I realized that we had not actually put that in. The, Jim's first preference is to have the dumpster in this location, which, again, for reference, is about 75 feet back from the road along that evergreen screen. That said, we've got to look at the driveway, so if we widen the driveway. Can't be certain.
Any other board questions before I open it up? All right. Any public officials have any comments, either in person or on Zoom? Seeing none. Any public comments? None in person. Anybody on Zoom use the hand raise function if you can? Seeing none. All right.
Can I also just get an answer as to why it was decided to not have fencing? Other than space limitations, obviously, but.
So, I mean, fencing's all right looking and stuff like that, but for somebody to walk back there, the thought of somebody walking back there, breaking into a unit and carrying something out seems outrageous. I mean, I just can't even imagine somebody doing that. So we wanted to put in the wood guardrail for beauty, and I just didn't think it was necessary at all.
I believe.
But you have a gate for access to drive in.
For a car. So I do believe that we have no fence, that a car could go up, break into any units and steal a bunch of stuff, but you'd have to get through the gate first. So a person would have to, you know, to get in there, would have to get out of their car, go in there. And like I said, I mean, I'm not sure what they would be trying to carry out of the storage room.
Just we've asked for it in the past.
I was going to say, wasn't the last one, the last couple of boards required fencing?
Yes, so.
I need to see that in a town that has fencing.
Okay. I did not.
So our next, as you may have heard me do before, I'm going to sort of turn to you as far as, you have some work to do and get things together. Our next meeting is June 6th, which is in two weeks. Our meeting after that is June 27th. I'm certainly willing to put it on to either one, but, you know.
I would try something too good.
Okay.
Yeah, because actually we might be able to be through, possibly through the conversation.
Fair enough, too.
Yep. Just heads up on 27th, we do have 686 College Highway at 7:10. That's been, I'm sorry.
I said yank.
Oh.
But that was, you know, we're not expecting that to be a long discussion, right?
We could schedule this for 7:11.
What, the one who remembers stuff and happens to ask me?
So they ask for some extensions relating to the dividend subdivision.
Okay.
He's wanting to show us.
Yeah, but that's not bad if that stays on. No, that's fine. All right, so. I'm going to say, why don't we put this on for 7:30 on the 27th? Do I hear a motion?
Make motion for further discussion for 662A College Highway to move to June 27th at 7:30.
Okay.
Do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, aye.
Richard Singaray.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Smith, aye.
Jessica Burton, aye.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Have a good night.
Thank you so much.
All right.
Ready, Mike?
Last thing, who wants to take over his chair?
You do.
I'd like to make a motion to renominate Michael Doherty as planning board.
Second, third, fourth, all in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
I can't remember what Mike has to say.
He was over. Mike, Mike, Mike. I just nominated Michael Doherty to continue on the chair.
He's just Shanghai. I second it. I thirded it.
What comes next? That's the question. What's the retaliation going to be?
You get voted.
I'd be honored.
Keeping young Ray taking care of all problems the same.
All right, so I guess that takes care of the chair.
I guess that takes care of that. Don't even get a chance to speak.
Vice Chair.
Dick. I recommend Dick.
I can take it.
Well, you can. Well, you can.
I like Florida too much.
No, you can do it over the phone.
I think base speed would be very good for it.
I would do it.
I make a motion to nominate base speed for Vice Chair Planning Board.
Do I hear a, motion's been made. Do I hear a second?
I said I seconded it.
Well, he's asking for a second.
He motioned it.
He motioned it. I seconded it.
I didn't motion it. Somebody's going to second it.
The long favor. I'm not doing it.
Just a, just a second.
I seconded it.
Thank you.
How many seconds we need? All of them.
We'll do, apparently we need thirds and fourths. Roll call vote. Michael Doherty, aye.
Aye.
Dave Smith, aye.
Jessica Burton, aye.
Okay.
It's official.
All right, so we have Chair, we have Vice Chair, we do need.
CPC.
Is that what Marcus, he was on, yeah, you were the.
CPC.
No, you were the.
That's your baby.
I happily bequeath that to anybody who wants to.
No, you're, no, you're.
As the legislature, you will continue in those. I would like to nominate David Smith to continue on as the planning board representative to the CPC.
I'll second that.
Do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, aye.
Richard Singaray.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Smith, aye.
Jessica Burton, aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Have a good night, Chief. PBPC is what we need to address, because that's Marcus.
I nominate Jessica.
I can't nominate myself.
Well, I'm not going to say any if I were to nominate you.
I would not decline.
I nominate Jessica Burton.
I'll second that.
Do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, aye.
Richard Singaray.
David Sutton, aye, aye.
Dave Smith, aye.
Jessica Burton will abstain.
Did you guys send back that paperwork design?
Yes.
Yeah, it's coming down.
Maybe you have to send AR.
You're so odd. Look, I won't realize.
Title.
Isn't it, I haven't seen it.
Okay. Is there anything else that we need to deal with for composition? Is there anything else that we need to deal with for the composition?
No, I think that was it.
Marcus isn't here and submits a name.
That was enough.
Is there any question?
Despite a rather intense, you know, discussion.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to, do I hear the Dave Sutton?
Make a motion to close the meeting.
Dave Spina, a second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please like to go when you're done.
You guys gotta sign the A and Rs before you go.